All right, well, hi, let's start the June 17th. Planning Commission meeting. A little bit late, but 6:08, here we go, all right. Does anyone have anything that they want to add to the agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion. To adopt.
I make a motion, we adopt the agenda.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right, all those in favor?
Hi.
Okay, alrighty. Then we had minutes from both January 14th and May 6th, I think it was, yes. I only had one question on the May 6th meeting minutes. On the second page. It said DeLong inquired who regular restaurant construction and I, I don't know what that means.
Excellent question. I will revisit my notes and see if I can figure out what that's supposed to be.
Okay, and, and you know, if you've got, if you've got something to put into it, I'm fine with that. I couldn't. I mean, I remember him bringing some points up, but I can't think of, I just can't think of what, of what it might mean.
Right. Me either.
Me neither.
Did anyone else have anything for either one of the two minutes?
I did not.
Not here, not me.
Kevin?
No, I just make a comment, I guess, that in, in the future, I would appreciate maybe a little bit more elaboration on, on the minutes. You don't need verbatim by any means, but just for a little more context, and I don't know if the city council might appreciate that too, to try to get an idea of what, you know, the nature of the discussions, a little bit more, a little more in depth would be,
Yeah.
would be helpful perhaps.
Yeah, not quite so brief.
Otherwise, no comments.
Okay, all right, well then, if everything is okay on that, and as you know, Clarissa can find out what, what it was that we, what that sentence might mean, do we have a motion to approve the minutes, for both the minutes?
I'll make that motion.
Now I will second it.
Say all those in favor?
I.
Did everybody see hands, okay? All right, then we have new business, which has to do with, hold on. The Scenic Sign Corporation and Spikes Feed application for changing signs on the ACE hardware. Now, I don't see Mark, so is someone from staff going to, are, Clarissa, are you going to kind of run through things?
Mark's here.
No, I'm here.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I am. I am remote, if you guys hear me cheer, I apologize, I am sitting in a parking lot outside of the stadium watching my daughter's state semifinal lacrosse high school game right now, they're losing, but I at least got to watch most of the first half and part of the second half, so, but I can still see part of the game and the score, so I apologize if I'm somewhat distracted, so.
But it looks like.
I think we're getting, we're getting hard to half price for this on Mark, right?
You, you're getting, you're getting 100% of my effort though, so it's kind of exciting, we weren't expecting to get this far in the tournament and we did, so, anyway.
Mark, can you turn, turn off your virtual background so we can see what's going on in the game?
You'd see my car because I'm facing the field the other way out my windshield, so, yeah, I, I, and I don't know if you'd be able to see enough, I'm having some, I can see, I can see about three quarters of the field from my vantage point.
That's right.
I mean, I'm in Stillwater, if anybody's ever been to their stadium, there's not a great, like, parking in front of the stadium space, so.
Okay.
Anyway, so, Honorable Chair Commissioners, this item is coming before you as a request for a sign package review to allow a new sign package to be installed as a result in the change of ownership at the 5135 Oak Street property, which is the, was the former Wakonia Farm UCF site. The applicant's approached the city about updating signage on the building and on the site, following the sale of the property to the Spike Feed, which is a Gertens company. And so, we talked about how the previous signage had been approved and noted the previous sign had been, a sign package had been approved, all as a signed package, and there's a condition in that sign approval that said any changes, modifications, change in ownership would require the review and consideration of the city, and so we are coming back now with a revised sign package from the one that was approved in 2011 by that, that previous action. Property itself is zoned mixed-use downtown, it's guided mixed-use, it's approximately .35 acres, and within the mixed-use downtown zoning district, we have provisions for signage, which are permitted by the ordinance for mixed-use, but then we also have the downtown, or I'm sorry, the design guidelines that are on top of that, which also regulate signage. In this particular case, there was an existing sign package that was approved by the city council or Planning Commission City Council that allowed a certain amount of sign, including a pylon sign and a dynamic changeable sign that's located out in the front of the property. The applicant would like to utilize some of the signage that's on the building now, but also change out some of the signage. And so, what I did in my report is just an analysis of what was approved initially, a total of 362 square feet, on the north elevation, there's four signs, on the east elevation, there's one sign, and on the west elevation, there's two signs. And then I, I did that as a comparative to what they're proposing, so 362 square feet was approved, 343 square feet is what they're proposing to put back, that consists of the north elevations to have eight new signs. One is going to be relocated, that's the ACE, the ACE Hardware sign, and then on the east elevation, a, a new sign, and then keeping one of the existing signs. And then on the west elevation, I said no signs, they're actually keeping the two signs in place on the west elevation. So, we have in the provisions wall signage, and our wall signage for properties in mixed-use downtown is based on a percentage of the total wall area that occupies, it's not based on the number of signs, but on the total wall area. In this particular case, total wall area, we allow for 15% of the total wall area to be utilized for signage. I'm combining the northwest and east elevations of the building to calculate total square footage, and I calculated a total of 3,332 square feet, using the 15% that would allow a total of approximately 500 square feet. So, my calculation of 343 proposed versus 500 permitted would say that they would fall under the allowable square footage for the total wall area that can be utilized for signage on this building. I also wanted to just note they're, they're trying to, or proposing to reuse the existing pylon sign. Pylon signs are permitted within the MUD district. This reuse of that sign is essentially just a replacement of the existing panel, but no change in the dynamic portion of the sign, no change in the height or the exterior dimensions of the sign, literally just a change in the panel facing on both sides of that pylon sign. So, with that, I noted we have adopted design guidelines, they're referenced in our zoning ordinance for signs. I note that the applicable provisions of those signs. I also noted again that we don't allow internally illuminated. They're proposing to leave the existing internally illuminated ACE sign that is located on the east-facing wall and keep that, so they're, they're, they're not proposing a change in that, that's something we'd, we'd have to consider, and then they're also proposing to utilize the existing pylon sign that's internally illuminated as well by just replacing the plastic or the acrylic panels on the outside of that. So, with this, there's a little bit of gray area in our ordinance, or there's a little bit of subjectivity that we can use to determine, you know, sign approval. We asked for a sign package showing, you know, the total signs that are being put back, comparing it to the existing sign package that was approved and trying to determine is what they're proposing consistent with our current ordinance, which really hasn't changed since the adoption or approval of the, of the 2011 package, and, and whether or not the, the, the utilization of the existing signs can remain, and then the proposed signage can be put onto the building. I did work with the applicant to try to just, you know, kind of go through what was being proposed versus what's existing and, and how they're planning to kind of keep the majority of it, we had talked about the notion that in some ways, we do have a non-compliant, a non-compliant provision in our sign ordinance that says if a sign is non-compliant and the applicant is proposing to just reutilize by replacing a panel, that is something they could do, I think that's most applicable to the pylon sign, in that they could reutilize that pylon sign under the current provisions of our ordinance by just replacing the panel. You will notice in the pylon sign replacement, they're using the same logo as the UCF store that was there. They're, they're changing UCF Farm Supply to Spikes and Howells Feed Seed Pet Lawn and Garden, so, but if you look at the, the actual logo, I had to actually double-take on it a couple times because it is very, very similar in terms of the branding that they're talking about utilizing. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Planning and see if there's specific questions, I'm happy to go through any specific aspects of the request.
Okay, before we do that, is the applicant on, on with us or not?
I'm going to say no.
I can't hear you, John.
Who's Gruber and Allen?
Then they are on, I can't see it, but then they would be on.
They're, they're attendees.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, and then have we, I know that this is a public hearing, has there, in the paperwork, it said there hadn't been any comments, is there anybody that's here for that?
We just have the two attendees, Mr. Gruber did raise his hand for a moment, now it's off, but, and then we did not, I did not receive any other comments via email or telephone.
And I did not either.
Okay, well then, let's, um, let's open the public hearing at 6:21, make note that there, there were no comments and there is no one here, and we'll close it at the same time, and, and then ask the applicants if they had something that they wanted to, to say, I have a couple of questions, but nothing. Difficult.
We would need a motion to close the public hearing, Mrs. Chair.
To close the public hearing?
Right, you would open it and then you would ask.
Oh, sorry.
Close the public.
Okay. Okay.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, all those in favor? I.
I.
All right.
And now you want me to let the applicants into the discussion here?
Um, yes, so that if there are questions, they would be able to answer it if they would like. Okay.
Okay, so, Mr. Gruber and Mr. Allen, you are now in the meeting.
Bob, do you want to go ahead and start off?
Sure, I'm Bob Gruber with Scenic Sign and happy to answer any questions that you guys may have.
Okay, thanks.
I'm Luke Allen, I'm the general manager for Spikes Feed and Hools Feed, I manage all six stores around the cities. Maple Plain being our newest, so we're, we're happy to be in town, looking to make our, our sign changes so we can get our sign up on the building.
Okay. All right, does, like, just a couple of questions that, that I had, and maybe a comment. I'm comfortable, I remember the conversation that we had when we did, when the signage for, for ACE, well, it was actually pre-ACE, but whoever was in there before, Wakonia was, was doing it. To keep the pylon sign and use that, which was not something that, as Mark said, is not a part of what we would like the signs to be, but because it's there and all that they're doing is changing the, the panel, I personally don't see anything wrong with that, it's not going to make anything bigger or different in that sense. So, that, that was okay for, for me. Just a curiosity question that I had, I'm not understanding why ACE remains on the building and, and, and I'm, I might not be understanding something here, but I didn't get how they were still connected, so I didn't understand, since it's a new company, why, why are, why is ACE still there?
Okay, so I'll, I'll go ahead and explain that, again, this is Luke with Spikes. So, we are part of the ACE co-op basically, and we're also part of True Value. So, we, we buy our products through ACE, so we are an ACE member. It does not mean we have to be 100% ACE hardware. We can also be an ACE, just a store that, you know, we carry minimal hardware in there now because it's not something that Gertens is strong in, you know, we're strong in our lawn and garden, we're strong in our feed departments, so we wanted to stick with what we do best. And, but keeping that ACE alive, as many of you know, the, the nation in general doesn't have a lot of backstock in product, so we, we like to try to keep our options open and who we can buy from for distributor. So, ACE is a distributor for us that we're able to purchase from still, and part of that requirement is that we have an ACE sign on the building.
Okay.
That, that is where we need to keep the ACE.
Okay. Thanks for that.
Yep.
How about other comments from?
So, this is Stefan Schrusen, I had the same question about the ACE sign, but if it's a requirement, I guess, to maintain the franchise, if you will, then it makes sense. The only comments I had, I mean, it makes sense, I think, to, I have no problem with the, the amount of signage, it's less than what was there before, and the reuse of the, of the, the, the pavilion sign is, was fine as well too, I just had some comments, I guess, about the front facade and the, more of a design aesthetic concern or questions. I'm fumbling to get to the right section here. In that, it's like we've got three different types of fonts, I'm still trying to find the right page here, I've got so many, apologize. Where it just, for just from aesthetic standpoint, it seemed kind of confusing to have the logo with its font beneath the the gable on the, on the, on the right side, and then the different font of the information across the facade, and then you had two other logos that are different altogether on the far left side. So, I don't know if that's something that other commissioners feel strongly about, or if it's something that would give an effect, but those are just the comments that I had, that it just seemed a little, from a design standpoint, a little I won't say confusing, but just not as coherent as it could be.
It's a branding thing, I guess, we, we have Spike stores, we had three Spike stores. Last year, we purchased Hools Feed last September, which was two stores. So, we've been trying to keep the, the Spikes and Hools as our main logo, and I guess as, as you look at that building over the vestibule area, that is, that is going to be more our core group, our core logo that goes across all of our stores, and we'll be changing our other stores to go to that same. And the Spikes on the, on the left is the Oval of Spikes, which we have on the other three stores, so people are familiar with certain logos, they're, they're familiar with things they've seen in the past, and they've seen Spikes, so they know Spikes. So, we wanted to still have that logo on there, so yes, there is a couple different logos on there, but it's, it's to try to keep bringing people back that are, that are familiar with the logo.
Is it possible then to do something with the the words Feed Seed Pet Lawn Garden that go more of the, I do see that the Hools is all uppercase, but the Spikes are both under, with the the old logo, so to speak. An upper lowercase type of thing might make it a little.
I guess what was, if, if you had the current, you know, the current was there where they already had the paint and rental, they, I think they had farm on the one side, so it was kind of trying to stay consistent with that white lettering around, if it's a capital letter, lowercase letter issue, we can look at changing that, if it's a font issue, we can review, looking to change it to match more the Spikes and Hools over the vestibule.
Yeah, they did with ACE Hardware, they did when they said paint and rental, there, there was more of an upper lowercase type of thing, so I understand about, you know, logos and what people just, you know, a quick seeing it as they drive, I can understand why you would want them to not be wondering, is that another Spikes or another, or the one that they know?
Correct. This is Bob from Scenic Sign too, I can talk a little bit about a design and, and the importance of actually changing things up, and I can understand the reasoning and, 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 and the thinking, how things should always be the same on buildings, but actually, our designers are trained to do things very differently than that, believe it or not, because these guys are coming out of college, is what they're really trying to do is, is separate the different parts of that signage, so rather than just having a logo and then having a, a tagline underneath it that looks exactly like the logo, if you think of a lot of logos, they intentionally change those, those taglines because they serve a different purpose. The, the logo itself is the branding part of it, and then the taglines and the verbiage are kind of the message that goes with it, and so from a design standpoint, I can tell you the younger kids at least, coming out of school, are trained to do it this way. And, and I think that plays a role in why you're seeing it, look this way.
Okay. All right. Other questions, other comments?
So, I got one question, on the ACE hardware, I understand the contractual end of that, it's awfully a large space, it's probably more of a personal, I keep trying to go in there to get a nut and bolt, it drives me nuts. But anyway, that aside, is there anything in the contractual, or maybe it's just a cost advantage, just leave it the way it is, to have it that size?
I believe, you know, we were just trying to keep the signage as the ACE itself was just, what was there is what we were going to use. You know, not, not, not changing anything, they don't pay us to change signs or anything, so we're keeping with what they had, I don't think they want us to reduce any signage, so, we were just moving the ACE off to the right side. Instead of having it on a wall. It doesn't have to be 100% hardware, we, we have talked about that bolt and nut issue and possibly bringing some of that stuff back, but that'll be a review over the winter, but.
Yeah, and I, and I, I'm with Mike on that, because I went in a couple weeks ago and I, I guess I had not realized what was going on, and was flabbergasted because it, it really isn't a hardware store, and I do appreciate, and I, I'm thankful that you explained about, you know, being able to source materials from other places, but it, having it say, you know, Feed Seed Pet Lawn Garden and that, and not hardware, so, but you can't put not hardware on there, so, but.
I have another question.
To make the changes, to, to be able to get the, the right message on that front of that building so people know what we are.
Yeah, yeah, and that, in that sense, seeing it that big, that'll kind of help people to, to know.
Mr. Allen, did you say that the ACE sign was going to move from the east side to the west side?
No, the one in the front of the building, you can see, I think in the drawing that I have here of Scenic Signs, is the, just the three-letter ACE, the ACE in red is moving to the right to the vestibule.
Yeah.
For the hardware, the hardware is going away. Hardware is coming up and just the ACE is moving.
With the large.
What about the one on the east side?
That's staying in this.
Yeah, I, I agree that, I think the large ACE sign on the east side is going to mislead people to think that it is a hardware store, I know I've made a couple well, these chases in there already too, looking for things that I thought were, even after I knew that the store had changed kind of its, you know, its, its main purpose, there was some hardware in there, but it turned out, you know, to be not what I was looking for, so I think there will be, especially, it's very visible from westbound traffic that there will be some confusion there from folks thinking that's a hardware store.
It'd be kind of interesting to be able to de-emphasize that a little bit if it was possible, coming from the westbound traffic, it's you'd be inclined to want to pull in and look for a hammer.
Yeah.
Yes, it'd be. Yeah. I haven't picked the stuff for any reason is good.
Well, Mark, then, the, what, what you're looking for, for the council is that we that we make the recommendation that that's on page five.
That's correct, it would be a recommendation to City Council for approval of the revised sign package with the conditions that are stated.
Faye. Your woman, I believe, Council Number Faye has a question or a comment?
Thank you, Chair, can I be?
Can you be what, John?
Can I be recognized? I just have a couple of, I have a couple of comments and/or questions that will make their way to City Council, but we might as well cover it here. Number one, Mr. Allen, you said you're managing five stores, is ACE, excuse me, it's plain flight. Is ACE, is there a sign package on any of your other five stores that have ACE or ACE hardware on them?
Not currently, we, we man, I manage six different stores, so this is the only store that was an ACE store, and the only one that we have a number, a, a member number to purchase from, so like True Value, I have six different member numbers I can purchase from all my stores. But there, I don't have to have a true, I don't have to have a True Value sign, but the ACE is, is a requirement for that one location.
And then this question would be from Mark. You mentioned that the the review of the sign package is due to the change of ownership. And in the, in the, in the narrative, in the, in the paperwork from 2000, and I'm trying, I'm sorry, I'm trying to find it here, the original resolution, they keep referring to the company, I'm trying to find where a sign review would be necessitated by a change of ownership.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I, I said ownership, it's, it's, ownership is what's causing them to want to. Yeah, and I mean, I said ownership, it's ownership is what's causing them to want to rebrand and change the signs. But the the sign package itself, the verbiage in the approved resolution was the company may only alter the sign package presented to and be and to be approved by the city council upon an application and formal review of proposed changes by planning commission council to ensure conformance. I read that and I interpreted that as any change in the sign is subject to the review and approval. I also, in reviewing this, noted that the not all signage on this building and or the pylon is conforming. It was approved under this master sign package, and I thought it was most appropriate that the that the revised sign package go back through planning commission and council. I did review it to see if I thought we could review it, you know, just against the ordinance itself. And I didn't think we could. And so I thought it needed this type of action.
Well, this is more or less kind of grandfathering things in then, instead of a brand new formal sign review for this company.
It is because of the utilization of some of the existing elements. I agree with that, that it's sent, you know. Could they have left the True Value? I think so. Could they have left the pylon sign and replaced it? I think so. Because of those things, though, not being conforming, having been approved as a master sign package, I thought this should go back through as a master sign package for this similar type of consideration.
Because I suspect that the internally lit Ace Hardware sign, I assume that was going to be an issue. There's been a lot of conversation tonight centered around that. And I suspect it will be at the city council as well. I only bring that up to maybe from a collaborative standpoint, not, that's my personal view. That is not a city council view. I just only bring that up to maybe encourage discussion or direction. Thank you.
That's a good point. As I recall the discussion years ago, I think it was because as far as the internally lit sign on the east facing wall was because it was sort of the edge of downtown, not really in the middle of what we had hoped that, you know, the downtown development would be. That we were willing to make an exception for that internally lit sign facing east because of where it was located and where it was facing. Is that what you recall it, Michelle?
Yeah. And I think that in looking or remembering back to then looking at we were trying to keep things, you know, there's always what I think of as a trade off or a bargaining chip, so to speak. There was some kind of the pylon thing there. And if they didn't do that piece, then here's the other option, which at that time seemed worse. There were other things that were also brought up at the time when we were talking about the kinds of, okay, if we have that and there's the one lit on the east side. Then there were also trade offs that had to do with the kinds of lamps or lights that were there. And then the other signs on the building and so it was a compromise. And the fact, and I also not that this makes it right or wrong, but it's also similar to the situation that we have with the building. You know, between Blackwater and the post office that we have like continuous issues with signs. And so short of saying, okay, on this day or this year, anybody coming and asking about it, what you have to do is not. Always brought up as a concern. I don't see that there's much at different. There's a couple of new logo signs. I appreciate everyone having their own logo. I, and I don't know what to say. Not my business. I don't understand this part of the business where where you, I appreciate that you have Ace on there because of the reasons that you've stated. That makes sense. But the fact that it's really not a hardware store is maybe I look at it more like you're going to be more surprised when people come in because we have had a hardware store for a number of years again. And 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 I have a reason to go in when it was partly feed store because I don't have horses. So so I don't know how much I would be coming in now. Which is okay, although I do like the garden part of it. So I see all of it as, I don't know, a trade off, I guess.
It was a decision that we had to make. We had their numbers that they were running with the Ace. You know, they used to be a full Ace Hardware. And then they went to, you know, being just a majority feed store, partly hardware. And, you know, they were down to very small square footage of that. And we had the decision to make of having that many people in there as associates trying to help for that amount of money or try to switch it to something else that may generate more per square footage for retail. It's all about retail square footage. And, you know, that was just the company decision that we made and going forward. We will always review bringing things back if we need to, but for now, that was our company decision to move that direction. And I understand what you're trying to say as well.
Okay, yeah.
I think the nature of a seat for, we do have a lot.
Mike, I can't, I can't hear you.
Can you hear, am I on right now?
Yeah.
Typically, you have a lot of different things happening, a lot of different logos and it's a lot of different, I think the front of the building is wonderful. I think the side, it just gets a little much with the Ace Hardware and the spikes and holes and whatever. It'd be nice to be able to, and I don't know that we have any authority to do that in this process. It's more grandfathering, you know, it's kind of indicated. But it'd be nice to begin to clean up some of the signage from the buildings in going forward. East side of the building doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me. I mean, I understand the contractual. It could have been Bob's haunted. Whatever, you know.
And what, what do we have something as like options or as it stands or as it was presented? That go forward? How are we looking at this?
I think for me, I think the signage all falls within the guidelines as far as the square footage. I think that's been described and talked about. I mean, they've met all those. Actually, we have, it sounds like Mark is saying that we have actually less signage across percentage across the entire building. My only comment would be it would be great to see something happen with the de-emphasized thing that east side. East facing side.
I would concur with that comment as well, too. And I still I don't think it needs to be in the motion, but from a designer standpoint, I still have some some concerns about the front facade as well, too, but Barb, Mardell?
A poor person to ask because I'm always in favor of all signs and get more people up from 12 anyway you can. Right now, that's very difficult since we're shut down on both ends.
And the state of Minnesota probably closing too. Mark, where should we go from here?
Yeah, I think, I mean, if the planning commission wants to make a recommendation, I make a recommendation for approval with with the recommendation to council to de-emphasize the Ace Hardware sign, whether that be removal, whether that be taking away the internal illumination or whether that be taking away the hardware piece of it. I don't know. I think we could work with the applicant on that. And but you can make the recommendation however you want on this. It's an overall sign package and we have the ability to recommend what we feel is appropriate in that. Like I said, there are some exceptions to the rules already on this site with the pylon sign being internally illuminated and having a dynamic reader sign and then the internally illuminated Ace Hardware sign. So if you wanted to make that recommendation, we could certainly. I think it would be appropriate.
Okay.
I'll make the recommendation to approve the sign package with the amendment to remove the Ace Hardware sign on the east wall. As I understand, there still is Ace Hardware on the west wall. So they still would be compliant with their.
On the north side. Yeah, because I don't, I don't want to be a part of them losing their ability to buy, you know, the purchasing ability.
Right. I just think it's going to be a big source of confusion and maybe even some perturbed customers that are going to be misled.
Well, then.
Bob Gruber, can I have a moment to speak quick?
Sure.
I just thought it would be really good to point out that from a sign standpoint, there's two purposes to signs and it's point of destination and it's advertising. And there is no question that this east facing wall is probably their, well, no question, and then probably don't work together. But it is their best wall for advertising. And so, you know, I don't know if you're thinking about that, Luke, if they're going to take away the Ace Hardware, maybe there's an opportunity for you to put something else there to get your message across. But I just wanted to bring that up before it goes too far and make sure, Luke, you have an opportunity to think about that.
Yeah, you know, ultimately, it's going to come to, you know, our ownership is going to have to give the final word on, you know, what we remove. And, you know, you can propose what you guys want. And, you know, if that Ace were to come down, we looked at that east wall and said, that's an area, you know, we would love to have a billboard. But I know that, I think that sounds like that might be an issue. But if there's something else that we can work on on that wall, if it's maybe just a bigger spikes, holes, you know, we can look at doing that instead and keep the farm and garden where it is and maybe put the spikes and holes over, but keep it nonlit. But you guys can, you guys can make the recommendations that you see fit.
And actually, that, that isn't a bad idea because there will be Ace still on the building. And to the point of like a billboard sign, no. No, don't go down that road. And well, then I would let us add, I've lost the page, where your three points are, Mark, to add, to take or to reconsider the the east side Ace Hardware. And and that they could maybe look at the spikes and holes being there within our guidelines as a recommendation to the to the council.
I'll, if I'm allowed, I'll amend my motion to say rather than remove the Ace Hardware sign, I'll say remove and possibly replace with a sign that you know, that represents the company name, Spikes and Holes. So I'm not sure if that would require, though, maybe this question for Mark, if that would require them to come back with another proposal? Or is that something that would be handled administratively internally? In terms of review of that sign?
Yeah, it would be something that you would want to do. You would want to put it in the recommendation and they would then have the opportunity to either make an amendment to the plan and bring it forward to council or do an alternate plan that they could, it would have to be reviewed and approved by council. So you would make the recommendation and then we would that council be actually seeing what it is that they'd be doing. Otherwise, you're right, it would have to go back. But I think if it's just that one sign, your recommendation to remove the Ace Hardware and then to allow replacement with something company branded, I think that's appropriate. And then I would just ask the planning commission to be specific that it comply with ordinance, including not being internally illuminated, which I think is part of the issue with that Ace Hardware sign.
Yeah, yeah.
That's great.
Let's do that. Yeah.
Anyway, you know, to Bob Gruber's point, it is the most impactful side of the building. Which is also why it makes a little sense why Ace is there when it has nothing to do with Ace to the customer.
Yes, yeah, okay. Well, then do I have a recommendation for what Mark said? To present to council? Because I'm comfortable with them looking at if there is an option or like another option that the company could store.
Stephen made a motion.
Yeah, Stephen made that a motion.
All right, then do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, all right. All those in favor? Hi.
Hi.
Okay, now when? Mark, when would this go?
To the city.
Yeah, before the council.
That is a Clarissa question, and I don't know the answer to that, Clarissa.
If he can have it ready by next Thursday, I can get it in the packet for the 28th.
Yeah, I will for sure.
Great.
All right. Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gruber and Mr. Allen for your comments and and listening. Much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll see you guys.
Good luck with the business.
Thank you.
Luke, welcome.
All right, then. All right, we did that. Was there any other? Any other business or any other question? I had thought that there was going to be two more, two other applicants asking for something for the information in the newspaper, but evidently that didn't happen.
Did we lose Mark?
Yeah. We are, oh, can you hear me? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I know. Yeah.
Okay, sorry about that. We did have another application that was, we notified the, that we noticed that meeting for actually two additional applications. Hoping, you know, sometimes we're kind of on a hoping, we're hopeful that they're going to get all their information into us. But in the case of both of them, we had comments that they needed to make revisions to plans with, and they were not able to get us those revisions by the time we needed to publish a packet. So we've pushed those out now until a future meeting, trying to get that. So we want to make sure we get kind of complete submittals and they both were not totally complete by the time they needed to be. But because of just timing and publication, we went ahead and published. You know, just so if they were able to get everything put together, we can move it forward.
Okay, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Good, because it is better to have complete kind of things. Anybody else have questions or other business, Barb?
I do. Clarissa, thank you for having the packets so I could pick them up. But I was just noticing Mardell's information with my information and I'm missing some pages. But I was able to look at hers to know what was, what I was missing. So I, well, it's all right, except that it played a big part on what we were talking about tonight. But I was able to look at hers ahead of time and figure out what I wanted to say. So but again, thank you for letting me pick up my packet and then the others also. So I'd like to continue that. And if I could. And if I could also make another note that this is before your time, my dear, so it's not reflecting on you, okay? But I I know Stefan has mentioned this before. Could we make sure that all the pages are numbered so we can follow correctly?
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Barb. And then, um, there was an email or that went out and and are we are we going to be having continuing to have Zoom meetings or is it going to be at city hall or how are how are we going to do this now? Masks, no masks? How how should we do this?
We can meet at city hall. We can be unmasked as long as you're vaccinated. And we are going to offer a hybrid option. So you guys can be there, but we are going to still have a Zoom meeting so that the public can still participate. Or even commissioners can participate if they would like via Zoom.
Yeah, okay, okay. And will that start whenever we have the next meeting then?
Next meeting. Oh, the great.
And when will the next meeting be? Given the holiday and all, oftentimes at first, our meeting in July is is moved. Is are there any plans for changing the date?
Well, we had we had in setting up this meeting was the idea was to combine the June and July meetings into into one. So we're currently, the next meeting would be that first Thursday in August. Unless Mark believes that that a special meeting mid-July is in order.
Okay, very good.
The benefit of that being, you know, the regular council meetings are the last. So you guys meet the first Thursday. Council regular business meetings are the fourth Monday, so that that would kind of creates a big gap between the groups, so.
Mardell, are you going to the lake in July?
No.
Yeah. Nothing here. Oh.
Not this year.
Not this year. Well, anybody else have any other questions or issues?
Happy Father's Day, everybody.
Yep, happy Mother's Day, dads.
Yes, and you.
Happy Father's Day. Thank you.
Well, then, I'll go ahead. Clarissa?
No, I was just going to remind you, we need a motion.
Yeah, I will. We need to entertain a motion.
I make a motion to say good night for this meeting and see you all later in August. I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor? Hi. Good seeing you, John.
It's seeing all you too. Have a great evening and happy Father's Day, guys.
Happy Father's Day to you guys, too.